Good evening and welcome to the 2025 Candidates Forum sponsored by the Clarkstown Council of PTA's. To our candidates here, thank you for joining us. I am Alyssa Neese, Treasurer of the Clarkstown Council of PTA's. I will be your host tonight. This forum is held yearly for community members to learn about the candidates running for the Clarkstown Central School District Board of Education. This forum is not a CCSD district or school event. Participation in the forum is not mandatory for the candidates. This year, we have three candidates, one incumbent, John Maltby, as well as Chris Conti and Ayman Rankin, who are all running for two available seats on the Board of Education. I'd like to introduce everyone here tonight. Clarkstown Council of PTA's President Tiffany Perchibali, Immediate Past President Sonal Kassaris, Vice President Jackie Pepe, Central Hudson Regional Director Shauna Wohl, and our candidates. To learn more about the candidates, please go to the PTA Council website to view candidate questionnaires. Before we get started, I want to give a huge thank you to Josh Adler, a volunteer parent in the district for recording this event tonight. Thank you, Josh, for all your help. And now, I would like to introduce Tiffany Perchibali, the moderator for this evening.
Good evening and welcome candidates. I would like to review the guidelines for this evening. A short while ago, the candidates drew cards to determine their seating order and who would kick off the forum with their opening statements. Each candidate will receive up to two minutes for their opening statements. We'll then move to the questions, which we received from the school PTA's and Clarkstown community. You could only choose a handful of questions due to the forum's time limit. So if you don't see your questions asked here tonight, we urge you to reach out to your candidates individually. For the seating order, Mr. Rankin got the highest card and will be the first person to provide their opening statement, followed by Mr. Maltby. Once opening statements are completed, we'll start questions with Mr. Maltby. Going first, each candidate will get a chance to answer at least one question first. The closing statements will begin with Mr. Conti. We will be asking nine questions tonight. You will have up to one minute and 30 seconds to answer each question. The timekeeper will hold up a sign when you have 60 seconds and then when you have 30 seconds. When your time is up, the timekeeper will call time. With that, let's begin with our opening statements. Mr. Rankin, please go ahead.
Good evening. First off, I would like to thank the Clarkstown PTA Council for inviting us here tonight and hosting this event. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Ayman Rankin. I'm running alongside Chris Conti for Clarkstown School Board, and I urge you to vote for both of us on Tuesday, May 20. I decided to run for school board in Clarkstown because I believe every child deserves access to a strong, supportive, and forward-thinking education. As someone deeply involved in our community, I've seen firsthand the incredible strengths in our schools and the real challenges we need to face together. I'm committed to making our schools safe and inclusive spaces where teachers feel empowered, students are inspired to grow, and families have a voice that is heard. That means responsible budgeting, practical innovation, and full transparency. I'm not running based on politics, I'm running on purpose. Let's work together to build schools that are stronger, better, and ready for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maltby?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Maltby. And thanks again to the Clarkstown Council of PTA's for once again putting on this event. And I want to say right from the top, if you really do want to get involved in sort of directing your child's education and moving this district, get involved in your local PTA. As a former Scholarship Committee Head at Lakewood PTA and a scholarship reader at Felix Festa Middle School and my current role as a parent, PTSA parent at Clarkstown North through graduating senior, there really is no other way to sort of really get involved in the insights and access to the district. If you really want to influence this district, you know, don't run for school board. Become a member of the Clarkstown Council of PTA's. That said, I'm failing to follow my own advice. And I sit here before you again asking for your vote for Clarkstown School Board. Three years ago, I sat here in nearly the same spot at the 2022 Candidates Forum. At that time, when the district was without a superintendent, a lot of the questions focused on what my expectations were for the incoming superintendent. And my answers were focused on two things: leadership and communication. Leadership in terms of having a vision for this district and communication in terms of communicating directly, intentionally, and without ambiguity. I'm proud of what we've done over the past three years, and I think that there's still a lot of work to do. Sorry. So I ask you once again to ask for your vote for Clarkstown School Board. And I promise not to drag this district backwards.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Good evening. And again, thank you to the PTA Council for running this forum. Hi. I'm Chris Conti, and on May 20, I'm asking you to vote for Ayman Rankin and myself. My family moved to Congress in 1977. I attended Congress Elementary, Felix Festa, and Clarkstown North. I always knew I wanted to be a teacher. It was a calling I had in the seventh grade. After high school graduation, I attended STACK for my math undergraduate degree and my graduate-level secondary education degree. From there, I started working with extremely challenging students at Rockland Boses. After 26 years, I was transferred to IDT, a program where I worked with students struggling with mental health issues. Since education was a calling for me, I needed to teach at a higher level. NICID, the Teachers Union for the State of New York, has a division called the ELT, the Education and Learning Trust. I have been an adjunct professor at SUNY Empire for 16 years. Here, I teach graduate-level courses to teach teachers all over the state of New York. My greatest ELT accomplishment is researching and writing a graduate-level class called "The Happiness Classroom", where I share strategies and interventions on how to be happier. I have volunteered for Little League and travel baseball. My first Little League team was in 1992. Those players live in Congress and have kids that are now participating in Congress Little League. The players on that team, finally, from 1999 to 2010, I was the varsity head coach at Clarkstown North for cross-country and spring track. So as you can see, I have a lot of investment in this community. I've devoted a lot of time and effort to make this community the best. So again, on May 20, I'm asking for you to please vote for Ayman Rankin and Chris Conti.
Thank you. Let's begin. Our first question. Can you identify one recent curriculum change that you believe has positively impacted student success? What additional changes, if any, would you make to the current curriculum to prepare all students for future success? Mr. Maltby?
I can identify a few, but let me concentrate on just one. I think I referred to the fact that we had a new superintendent come into the district back in 2022. And I think I came onto the board shortly thereafter. And I think part of what we've done is sort of kind of shake the district to see what was working and see what wasn't working. Part of that analysis focused specifically on our elementary schools. And we've done two things there that are critically important. One is we brought in a new math program called Eureka 2, which is now going to sort of follow our students up through seventh grade. And we've also adapted and corrected a lot of what was wrong with our reading and literacy program, bringing in the UFLI Phonics program. And through these methods, I think, you know, your programs are only as good as they are sitting on the shelf. The real issue is making sure that our teachers are teaching them with fidelity and that our students are experiencing the same thing across the district. And with the addition of our curriculum coaches, which are now working in the district, so rather than using outside consultants, we are now have our own home team that are on call and available on demand. And that will ensure that our teachers are trained, up to date with our latest curriculum, both in math and in literacy, and they can be called on demand into our schools as needed. And I think these are critical additions to the district.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Can you identify one recent curriculum change that you believe has positively impacted student success? What additional changes, if any, would you make to the current curriculum to prepare all students for future success?
Thank you. So for me, academic excellence just isn't a goal. It's a commitment we owe to every student in our district. As a school board member, I believe that every child, regardless of their background or zip code, deserve access to high-quality instruction, rigorous curriculum, and the tools to reach their full potential. How would I do this? One, I would make sure that we had more resources in the classroom for teachers. Two, I would change the board policy on classroom size. The research is very clear. The more feedback a teacher can give a student, the better they will do in their class. So reducing class size is definitely a priority of mine. The next thing I would do is have more TAs. And while we're talking about TAs, let's talk about them becoming a salaried employee and not having them an hourly employee. The final thing is to focus on early grades for reading and math. The sooner we can catch deficiencies in reading and math, the better we will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rankin?
So I'm going to piggyback a little bit off of what Chris was saying about class sizes. If elected, it's going to be my mission to decrease class sizes because the more time we spend focusing on the individual students' needs, the more of a chance they have succeeding, not only now, but in the future. And also discussing about what Chris said, the TAs are an essential backbone of our district. We need to support them and provide them with the resources to keep them here so we don't have a turnover like we've had in recent years. And again, focusing on math and literacy in the early grades in elementary school is going to be key because if you don't provide the resources early on, that's when students start to fall behind, and that's where we see deficits later on in their educational career. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two, we'll begin with Mr. Conti. How do you view your role as a school board member? And what unique perspective or skill do you bring that sets you apart from other board members? What is the greatest contribution you bring to the Board of Education?
Thank you for that question. That's a great question. So as I alluded to in my introduction, I work for NICID in the ELT department. And so professional development and teacher training is my forte. I teach a lot of classes on various topics: assessment, RTI, bullying, mindfulness. The list is quite extensive. So for me, is the teacher training part that I'm... For me, I feel I'm the most qualified for that. Thank you.
Mr. Rankin?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How do you view your role as a board member? And what unique perspective or skill do you bring that sets you apart from other board members? What is the greatest contribution you bring to the Board of Education?
I will bring the view of an outsider to the Board of Education if elected. As many know, and it's been a concern of a few, I do not have children in the school district. I plan on raising a family in our community and planting roots down in our district. I'm a graduate of the district. I graduated in 2016 from Clarkstown South. I'm very involved in the community. I've sat on the board of nonprofits, and I've been involved in budgeting and creating budgets, creating policies on harassment, bullying for different nonprofits. Again, that is what I'm going to bring to the board. We need to create clear and decisive policies, especially on bullying in our schools, and make sure that they are followed through at every level, not just in the high schools, not just the middle schools, elementary schools. And we need to educate parents, staff, everyone on the policies for bullying because it's a major issue.
Thank you. Mr. Maltby?
Thanks. So I am a lawyer by trade. I've been a member of the New York State Bar since 1997. And I have over 25 years of litigation experience, particularly in the federal courts. So conflict is sort of my area of expertise. But in that conflict, you know, not only knowing when to fight or advocate as hard as you can, but also knowing when to collaborate, when to negotiate, and when to try to come to a resolution that makes the most sense for the most parties. And I think I bring sort of an even temperament to the board. You know, I've noted before, a lot of what the board does, and I know there's a lot of misconception about what the board does, is administrative. We sort of make sure that the district keeps running, that the bills get paid, that the budget gets passed, and that, you know, we're working and overseeing what our superintendent does. We're not supposed to be getting into things like curriculum or specific choices within the classroom. That's our teacher's job, that's our administration's job. So I think understanding that role and sort of bringing a collaborative mindset to the board is part of what I bring to this job, what I brought to this job over the past three years. And that's critical. I mean, you need to sort of get along, you need to sort of share a vision for the district in order to move the district forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number three, we'll start with Mr. Rankin. What is your opinion on the cell phone ban in New York schools?
I think the cell phone ban in New York schools, I think in some aspects, it's good not to have the cell phones in the individual classrooms. But again, we need to look at how it's going to impact communication throughout the day and if there's an emergency in the school buildings. Because you do have instances where it would be beneficial for students to have a device. But in many cases, it distracts from classroom activities. So in that respect, it is good to have the cell phone ban. And it creates accountability for the students, and it's going to focus them more on classroom academics. Thank you.
Mr. Maltby?
Sure. So I think a lot of, is sort of a lot of good intentions are being placed on the notion of the cell phone ban. I think a lot of folks have sort of hung a lot of student anxiety, a lot of student depression issues and mental health issues on the facts of cell phones. I'm not sure the science is quite there on that yet. Clearly, the cell phones are a distraction. When I speak in classes at universities and law schools, you know, it's almost a constant reminder to put your devices away. Hopefully, I hold their attention a little bit better. But I think it's important to have our students focus on their classwork, to making personal connections with each other, to not being so focused on the phone. There will be a lot of logistical issues that need to be worked out. This board will be charged with developing a policy in accordance with the state law, which is a bell-to-bell ban. There are no, you know, midday exceptions for most uses. So we'll need to figure that out. There's been a lot of talk about different devices and different technologies that can be used to disable a phone or lock it up in a bag. But there's also been a lot of articles about students figuring out ways around those things. So I'm hoping that we approach this in sort of a, in a kind of a reasonable manner, not sort of looking to buy the thing with the most bells and whistles, but to buy the thing or to do the thing that makes the most sense for our students and for our schools. But it will take a lot of work.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
So that question about cell phones has been around for a very long time. And when I teach my classroom management classes to teachers, I would always go back to them. If there's a problem in your classroom, the problem is yours. You need to fix it. You have to own that. So the question that the state is coming in with another unfunded mandate, I think is a little bit ridiculous. I think, and I've seen a lot of teachers in this district use the cell phone and use the apps on the cell phone as a positive, as a way to further their education. It's a form of doing formative assessment. There are a lot of formative assessment apps on the phone. I know a lot of teachers in this district use those apps. So my question would be, if we're forced to do this, how are we implementing it? How are we funding this? Who's collecting the cell phones? Or we tell them not to bring it in? So there's a lot of questions around the cell phone ban. But me, myself, my own opinion is that the ban is not a good thing. I think that the cell phone is a positive tool for students to use within the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number four, we'll start with Mr. Maltby. Vaping and gummies are a very serious problem among our youth. What safeguards, programs, or deterrents would you, as a board member, recommend to help lower usage in our school as well as educate parents and students on the dangers of using these products?
Well, I think you sort of hit it on the head with the rest of your question. We need to sort of educate parents about what students are engaging in. I know that this is in the beating-at-dead-horse category, but to remind students, to remind parents, to sort of what to be on the lookout for with respect to the activity and conduct of their children, with respect to, you know, trash that's related to vapes, because there is a lot of trash, because someone dumped it on my lawn. You know, to sort of, you know, be aware of, to sort of see what the telltale signs are when your child may be engaging in this type of behavior. And then to also educate the students themselves, to make them aware of the dangers of vaping, the dangers of what is doing to your body, both, you know, in terms of your health, your lungs. If you're breathing in vapor, that you're not sure where it comes from. Or from, you know, impairing your mind by taking gummies. And oftentimes, you know, one of the real dangers is that because students don't have access to legitimate sources of vapes or gummies, they often turn to sort of the, you know, the black markets of these things and buy things that are, you know, not, you know, store sold, but given to them by friends or given to them by people they might run to on the street. And that's where the real danger is in terms of taking things that can cause real harm to themselves.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
So I 100% agree that education is going to be a part of the solution. The other things that I would implement is I would first see if the schools have PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. Using that model, there's a data component to it. And data is the key to driving your resources. Resourcing meaning personnel. So if you're getting write-ups of a particular area in the school that their students are vaping or doing gummies, well, that's where I'm going to have my security. That's where I'm going to have staff or personnel standing there so that they're unable to do it. Supervision is the key to vaping and the gummies. So after, once you have the write-ups and the data, then you can be proactive with then trying to convince kids not to do it because you're there in their spot that they're normally going to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Rankin?
You answered it in the second part of your question. Education is key when we talk about vaping and gummies. We need to educate parents and students about the long-term health effects and how it may affect them, not in a few years, but later in life. And as Mr. Maltby touched on, you never know because some students are getting them through friends, and it's on the black market. You don't know if they could be laced with something which is going to be detrimental to the student, and it could harm the student. So we need to see where on our school properties and evaluate and try to look at problem areas where vaping and gummy usage could be occurring and keep an eye on it so we can target it and prevent it from future use and try to come up with a plan to educate further parents and students and teachers of what to look for and try to come up with a solution to benefit the entire district.
Thank you. Number five, we begin with Mr. Conti. What measures do you think the Board of Ed can take to ensure students with IEPs and 504s receive the supports and services that they are entitled to?
Being a special educator for the past 32 years and having three children that are classified with an IEP, I feel, having all three boys have the IEP for as many years as they've been in the district, that is one thing that I feel like Clarkstown does an amazing job with. I can't speak highly enough of the educators and the people that run the IEP meetings. They do it in a professional manner. They share their information and their data with us about my sons. And then we make, as a group, we make a collaborative decision. I can't speak to having any difficulties with the district. I've always had nothing but positive experiences with it. So I would, if that, if there is an issue that's going on with some families, I would like to hear what they have to say about what issue they're having with the 504, the IEP, and to get into that. Speaking of my own experience, it's just been a tremendous, tremendous experience.
Thank you. Mr. Rankin?
From talking to many people in the district that have students that have IEPs and 504s, again, as Mr. Conti said, many families feel that they're being fully supported and there's open communication in regards to their student. If there was any issues, if elected to the board, I would hope people would reach out to us and we could try to rectify it with administration to come up with a solution in the best interest of the families. Thank you.
Mr. Maltby?
Thanks. Yeah, so in connection with sort of that shakeup of the district, special education is another one of the areas that the board, with me on it, is taking a very close look at. In fact, there's currently an audit going on of special education, which I think will tell us a lot of things, the things that we're doing well, the things that we're doing not so well, and hopefully provide some prescriptions for how to fix that. Part of what I've heard is that things are a little slow, that we need to do a better job of sort of moving through the process of from assessment to the development of the IEP plan. We need to follow through and be stronger with those things. I'd like to see also the district do more. I think we're losing too many twice-exceptional children. These are children who maybe, you know, had super-high levels in math and sciences, but perhaps they don't get along well in a laboratory setting or interacting with others. I think that we're losing a lot of these children to out-of-district placements, and we want to, and we should be keeping them here. And just sort of a macro issue that is sort of on the horizon that I'm concerned about is that there's currently a lawsuit pending in Texas in the Fifth Circuit called Texas versus Becerra, where they are actually trying, 19 attorney generals of different states are trying to have 504 declared unconstitutional. And I think we need to have somebody on the board that sort of has an eye on that and sort of will be able to sort of maneuver and at least advise the district with respect to its liabilities and its potential obligations under the law.
Thank you. Question number six, Mr. Rankin, you'll go first. What is your understanding of social-emotional learning? How, as a board member, would you collaborate with students, parents, teachers, staff, and administration to foster SEL?
So social-emotional learning in our district, it's a great policy, but it needs to be revamped. We need to come up with a solution, working with all stakeholders, so there's concise and... We need to have concise disciplinary actions for different people within our community. You have, when you don't have concise discipline that's followed through every time, you're going to keep having the same issues from repeat offenders. And we've been seeing that in many cases. And it's going to be very important to sit down with parents, sit down with students, sit down with staff, and try to come up with a solution to best fit our district. And it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to be something that we need to involve surveys from many different demographics and come up with one thing that's going to work across the entire district.
Mr. Maltby?
Thanks. So again, part of what motivated me to run back in 2022 was really the need for this district to do more on the front of diversity, inclusion, and equity. And a key component of that is social-emotional learning, teaching our students, teaching our children how to not only love and take care of themselves, but also love and take care of their fellow students. And I know that the district does a ton of work in this area. But seemingly, every week, we're reminded of some other, you know, piece of vandalism, some instance of antisemitism, particularly lately. That just shows us that we need to do more work. And it's not, it's not only our Jewish students that are being targeted right now. Our immigrant community, our neurodivergent community, our LGBTQIA community all seem to have targets on their back these days from society at large. And I think we need to do a better job to sort of teach empathy here. And I know that we've got a program, but I think that, you know, we need to take a hard look at it. We need to figure out whether it's working. And it's great for kids to be able to talk about their emotions and their feelings and to explain them in a way that can be understood and dealt with and sort of assuaged. and to explain them in a way that can be understood and dealt with and sort of assuaged. But if it's not working, we need to figure out why not. And, you know, take the stuff that's working, get rid of the stuff that's not, and sort of, again, I think, take a hard look at this program.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
We can't expect students to thrive academically if they're struggling emotionally. Supporting mental health is not a luxury. It's a foundation for learning. This will be one of my top priorities. And I agree with Mr. Malby that I think we need to take a look at the current program and see how effective it is or isn't. And another initiative that I'd like to do, and this is just one example, is to have every school have a safe space or a mindfulness room in every school that students can go to if they need that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number seven, we'll begin with Mr. Malby. The district has been working on the Portrait of a Learner. What do you think should be included in this definition to help our kids succeed in the real world?
So I was actually part of the exercise, the program of developing the Portrait of a Learner. We spent two days together at Chestnut Grove District Offices, working very diligently on sort of putting together, "What does this look like for us?" And I think the sort of the takeaway, and everyone will sort of see that when it's finalized and released and there's more discussion on it, is we want our students to be lifelong learners. We want them to be curious, we want them to be creative, we want them to be interested in always learning more about what themselves and also the world that's around them. We want them to be entrepreneurial, we want them to be independent, and and we want them to, again, to sort of, you know, care for not only themselves, but to care for each other. We need to sort of instill empathy, I think, as a core emotion, a core feeling for each other in this district. And that's sort of, you know, putting aside sort of the academics. I think that, you know, really focusing on sort of the emotional health and well-being of our students is critical. And then after that, we can talk about all of the terrific academic programs that exist within this district for our students to learn and enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The district has been working on the Portrait of a Learner. What do you think should be included in this definition to help our kids succeed in the real world?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that program. Can you expand upon what it is, the Portrait of a Learner?
It was a study that the district did on all of the curriculum and all the programs that we have here in Clarkstown and to see what, to shape what we want our students to look like upon graduation.
Thank you. So what I would like to add, there would be two suggestions I would have. One is a financial literacy class that every student should take before graduation because a lot of students are going, leaving high school not knowing what a mortgage is, what's a stock, what's a bond, how to invest their money. And again, that's becoming a lifelong learner. Those are important lifelong skills. The other one is a character education, where the soft skills, I don't think we touch upon them enough. So character education would be the other. Thank you.
Mr. Rankin?
I think one of the most important things, as Chris touched on, is when students are leaving high school, I think we need to focus more on getting them financially ready and working on a financial readiness class for them, whether it be teaching them about investing, writing checks, budgeting, managing debt. There's much more that we can prepare them for the real world, especially for college and after. So that would be my take on it. Thank you.
Question number eight, Mr. Conti will go first. Studies suggest that participating in extracurricular activities, including athletics, provides many benefits for students. However, these opportunities are not always equitably distributed. How would you change that?
Thank you for that question. So for me, that is all around protecting girls' sports. Title IX was passed in 1972 to ensure that girls and women have equal opportunity in education, including sports. It leveled the playing field so girls could compete, earn scholarships, and benefit from athletics. This is not about excluding anyone, it's about protecting the space that was created for girls. We can respect all students while still honoring Title IX to girls. Title IX is a federal law. Let me say that again. Title IX is a federal law. Allowing biological males to compete in girls' sports violates the law by displacing female athletes from a roster. As a future school board member, I have a duty to uphold the federal law. This is about fairness, safety, preserving the opportunity that generations of women fought to secure. I would like to pass a policy in July or file a complaint with the Federal Office of Civil Rights on a Title IX violation. Thank you.
Mr. Rankin?
I'm going to say the same thing as Chris, so I'm not even going to repeat it, but it's going to be exactly the same as what Mr. Conti said.
And Mr. Malby?
Thanks. Just to sort of correct a couple of things. Title IX, as it currently stands, is a federal law, but it does not say what you think it says. There has been an executive order issued with respect to Title IX that talks about removing trans women, I guess is the focus, trans girls from competing in sports against girls who were assigned, girls at birth. But it is not yet a federal law. We'll see what happens. You know, the administrators have made a lot of noise about this topic, but there is no law as of yet. There is, though, a New York State law which protects the rights of trans students to participate in sports in accordance with the gender with which they identify. And that law was also enshrined into the New York State Constitution as a result of last year's Prop 1 vote, which passed the state and is now added gender identity as a protected class to the New York State Constitution. So I know there's been a lot of misinformation about this topic, but here in New York, a student who is trans, who is socially transitioning, if they're male to female or female to male, the law treats them as they are female or male and they are allowed to participate in the sport in accordance with the gender with which they identify.
Thank you. And our final question, number nine. We'll go to Mr. Rankin first. Bullying is an issue throughout our district across all grade levels. How will you address bullying across all of our schools?
Bullying remains a major challenge within our district, and addressing it requires a united effort. It is imperative that we come together as an entire community, students, parents, and educators, along with administrators, to have open dialogue about the changes we need to make to district policy regarding bullying. By engaging in thoughtful discussion and conducting thorough surveys within our educational community, we can work toward updating our policies to ensure that consistent and fair consequences are implemented across the entire district. Only through collaboration with all stakeholders can we create a safe and supportive environment for all of our students.
Thank you. Mr. Malby?
Thanks. You know, I think we kind of need to move away from the notion of equity or diversity or inclusion sort of being a zero-sum game. There seems to be this notion that by celebrating, you know, someone else's culture, you're necessarily denigrating mine. And I think that's behind a lot of what is sort of the root cause of bullying, the need for students at the student level to sort of, you know, point to someone who's different and somehow, you know, belittle them or bully them or threaten them because of those differences. And again, I think that, you know, we need to do a better job as teachers, as staff, as administrators, as board members, and as parents in particular, to teach our children that our differences do not divide us, they make us stronger. And that would sort of be my emphasis in terms of looking at the problem of bullying. Again, looking at empathy, making sure that our students, you know, not only care about themselves, but care about others, that they know what it's like to walk in someone else's shoes, to feel someone else's pain, to feel those differences, and to understand that the differences make them great as well, that there are things that separate us, which unify us in a society that is tied together with all of the various social contracts that sort of make people act in a decent and moral way.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Every child deserves to feel safe and respected at school. As a board member, we must ensure all bullying policies are more than just words. They must be supported by training. Student education and a culture where respect is expected and modeled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes all of our questions for this evening. Right now, we'll begin our closing statements with Mr. Conti.
Thank you. On May 20th, I'm asking for your vote for Ayman Rankin and Chris Conti to protect girls' sports and restore academic excellence. Thank you.
Mr. Rankin?
First off, I would like to thank the Clarkstown Council of PTA's for hosting this amazing event tonight. And on Tuesday, May 20th, I'm asking for your support for Chris Conti and Ayman Rankin to come out and vote for us, please, for the Board of Education. It will make a change in the best interest of our community. Thank you.
Mr. Malby?
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, this has been an interesting three years for me. There have been certainly moments where I've questioned my decision to run in the first place. There have been moments of sadness, moments of tragedy, moments that have really rattled my belief that all of us truly do care about all students in this district. But there have also been great moments of joy, of happiness, of student achievements that I'll take with me forever. So in deciding to run again this year, I was pleased, I was proud of the things that we've accomplished in the past three years, but I felt that the work wasn't done. I think there was a lot of misinformation and disinformation last year about the state of the law, which led to a lot of ugly meetings right here in this room, where nearly every meeting would qualify as a DASA violation as students were attacked for who they are, who they identify as, and what they want to do as students. So you can say that you, you know, will respect all students and you will honor, you know, their identities, but if your main point is to draw a dividing line and say that, you know, "We respect you, we understand you, but you can't do this", that's a violation of New York State law. It is discrimination, pure and simple. And if, you know, if the community wants to, you know, file a complaint with the federal government or walk this district straight into a lawsuit, then so be it. We'll sort of see what happens. But I will continue to be a voice for all students. I will continue to be a voice that will support the law of the state, support the Constitution of the state, that won't play political games that are being played with funding and things like that. And I ask for your vote on May 20th.
Thank you. With that, our time is up for this evening. Thank you to our candidates for joining us tonight. To the viewers at home, please go to the PTA Council website for more information on the candidates. Thank you. Have a good night.